We'll start. So, welcome to the special meeting of the Town Center and Library Committee Meeting. What day is today?
November 18th.
November 18th. So, we're going to do something different today. We're going on a tour of the building first and to show the Select Board members and to record some examples of the deficiencies in the building. And we can do that now and can then come back and we'll do, you know, a brief presentation. I think the presentation will actually be shorter because we're doing the tour. A place to start is this room. You know, we're in this room a lot. The Select Board's in this room a lot, but you might not actually notice it a whole lot. If you look, and you'll see this all over the building, the ceiling tiles are stained and those are from water damage, probably primarily from the ventilation system, the heating and ventilating, ventilation system. The finishes in this, in this space were done by the school district when they moved in. And having worked for the school district, I know how frugal they are when they, when they do stuff. And so, this, this is not, you know, Class 1 office space.
We've got a space deck here that...
That was where my office was when I, when I worked at the school district. But, you know, if you imagine this room stripped down without the inexpensive carpet on it, there's a hardwood floor underneath this, and it really could, could look and feel a lot different. And that's true throughout the entire building. The, the, we're not talking about major changes on the inside of the building, but we are talking about making it much, much nicer, kind of bringing it back more to what it, what it originally was. Oh, and I, I forgot to ask if there's any public comment. Is there any public comment before we start? Karen, do you want to?
I'm just here to open up the Historical Society rooms and talk about the lack of heat and the over humidity.
There you go. There you go. It's, it's either too hot or too cold in this, in this building in any particular space.
I would agree with you, Jeff, on what you're saying about this room in particular. You, you know, we've had some topics like cough and fluoride cough, where we had people having to stand on their side of the rail here.
Yeah.
Because there's literally nowhere for them to come in.
Yeah.
You know, this is not suitable for a town this size that has people who want to participate.
We hope to get back to our original meeting room downstairs is what the, the plan is now. So, if you want, we can go, woo-hoo, take a walk.
Yeah.
On one side.
The other thing you could see in here is that the window, because of the drop ceiling, the windows are not full height anymore. They've actually got plastic panels, and so our plan is to actually have the full height windows again as well.
Yeah, the windows are a whole thing, you know, and, and, you know, I'll show you one on the stairwell of, of, you know, one iteration of, of how they could be fixed. But like, you know, this one, I don't think you could open this if you wanted to, you know, it's full, it's painted shut. And, and this one over here, this is, this is the, that's our ventilation system.
This one does open.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, I thought...
But the fact that you can do that to the windows is not good. It's not exactly energy efficient. And that, these are original windows from, what, 19, this side of the building, 1914? I can't remember which is the original.
1907, 1911.
Okay.
Half and half, the half and a half.
So, let's, let's, let's take a walk around. So, I'm not sure if we're going to be able to expose all of the tin ceilings in the building. This, these are, you know, a restoration of the original tin ceilings. And, you know, I think, I think Linda said that there was a stage over on this part. Do you remember? Yeah?
I don't remember.
No, you don't remember, but you remember looking at the plants.
There was a stage at that. This was one large study hall room for a kid who didn't have a class, and there was a stage on the, what is that, the east side, that they did operettas and dramas.
Cool. I wish we could do that again, but I don't think we...
We do dramas here every other Monday, so.
But, you know, that's kind of an example of what we would like to get to. What, what our floor plan is right now is conceptual. So, all of the materials that we put together, hey, Bar, all the materials we put together are conceptual with the, with the architect, with the understanding that once we have a budget, once we have a, a budget that passes, you know, a bond vote budget that passes, we would move into construction drawings. And at that time, where walls are could change, you know, where, what tenants we have could change. But we needed to have enough of a plan, enough of a design, in order to come up with the, a number for a bond vote. So, that was the intent. We had tried, when we first got, hired our architect, he went around and interviewed everybody who was using the building at the time, as well as some others who were interested in, in using the building, to try to figure out where and how much we could fit within the space and figure out, we offered the, the current tenants a wish list of what they would like. And as most wish lists, as actually most construction projects, you know, it can get bigger than what your, your appetite is. So, it, we went through several iterations, what, almost a dozen, I think, different iterations of, of floor plans and site design for this space. And that, that grew quite a bit, you know. At one, one iteration that included all of the wishes of all of the tenants, added a 4,000 square foot building onto the site, which would have been a lot of money. So, the committee decided to scale back and stay within the footprint of the building, both for, because of cost and because the lot coverage already for this site, we have more lot coverage than our zoning ordinance accounts for. So, adding a, in addition, or another building on the site, we would have to do a zoning change in order to do that. And we thought that, that probably wasn't wise. We're, we are allowed to, to do this building, to, to, to stay within the, the confines of this building. So, we have MMCTV over here. They've been a terrific partner. I don't think we, you can come in, we can go take a look at it if you like.
I'll give you permission.
Thank you. Is it okay if we just?
Sure.
So, if you've never been...
Soon this will be a radio studio, too.
Yeah, that, wouldn't that be awesome?
No, it's gonna be.
Yeah.
Should start it with Life Turkey. I was watching it yesterday.
So, you know, again, this was, this was renovated for the school district when the school district was here, and it hasn't really been changed significantly since then. And we anticipate being able to accommodate MMCTV. They've been really terrific tenants during, you know, particularly during the pandemic, which we really appreciate. But again, that will be a decision for the Select Board once we have a, you know, a firm budget and a, and a positive bond vote.
And is the space going to propose to be staying, proposed to be staying MMCTV?
At the moment, yes.
The same space?
Well, it could change, you know, the, so...
Right, but in general?
In general, in general. It, you know, could be, it could be smaller, you know. I mean, it, it could be reconfigured to accommodate. An interested tenant that we have right now is Radiate Art down in the basement. What we did learn about that is because of the, the building is in the floodplain, if we do a substantial renovation on the building, we cannot occupy the basement. We can use it for storage, but we can't use it for occupied space. So, they're the one tenant that's not on our, our current floor plans. That doesn't mean that they won't be in the final configuration, but it would require moving some more walls around. What the architect tells us is moving walls around, you know, changing what the walls are, it won't affect costs, you know, substantially. So, that could change a little bit. You like this?
This is gonna stay as a meeting room?
Yes.
It could.
And the plan is...
I actually like this room a lot.
But this is, you don't have any bold plans for this room here?
No.
The switch?
Oh, yeah, let's, let's, let's take a look at...
The telecom, which panel will not be left like it is.
Well, I hope we completely rewire the building and, and, and do, and bring it up to the 21st century. So, yes, that, that could all change. All of the mechanicals could change. So, this was a break room for the school district. It's also the secondary egress for this floor. The access to the fire escape, such as it is, is through, through this window, which is certainly not code, but it was okay at the time when it was put in, what, 1950s, I would imagine. So, that's, one of the big changes we're talking about doing for the building is adding an enclosed stairwell over in this, in this area over here. And that actually changes the kind of life safety issues within, within the building, and it changes how we can configure the, the main stairwell for the better, I think.
Because an egress, a stairwell coded for emergency egress has to comply with standards that just your bog standard stairwell does not. When you get into stairwell, you have to be basically guaranteed safety from that point on, right?
Yes.
So, we can't just like put four walls up and call it a day?
Yes. What we, what we think we're going to be able to do is to take out one of the firewalls in, in the, the main stairwell, which will expose the, the tin ceilings, which I actually think it'll make for a much different feel in the foyer around the Town Clerk's Office. Here, Karen will show us the, where the Historical Society is.
Yeah, so we use two rooms. You can see our office as you head in, head into that room. This is our office back here, and over here are archives. So, our office and then our archives, if you'll come in.
This is really awesome.
Can I say ours is the Richmond Historical Society?
Karen Yagi is with the Richmond Historical Society.
Come on in, everyone. I think there were more.
They're standing by.
That's all right.
Pass on by, go ahead.
No, I'm just...
But this is, this is where the excitement happens.
So, this, this window I can get open one foot if I prop it. And with my allergies and the must and the mold from old papers, I'm grateful for a little bit of opening. I often have to wear a heated vest to work in here in the wintertime, and in the summertime, the humidity is, is super high, which is really a problem for historical collection because of the mold and that sort of thing. These days, it seems like I meet someone in here almost once a week who wants to do research, or learn more information, and we get donations a couple times a month, so the collection keeps growing. And we, it would be nice someday if we could have one big room instead of two rooms, but we're very grateful for what we're having and are hoping that we'll have space in the future, and we'll be grateful for whatever we get.
Okay. You know, one of the cool things about these windows, there are 77 of them in this building, you know, because it was a school, that was the major lighting back when it was built. But, you know, I love the wavy glass, and you can see it through these windows, and that, we won't be able to keep. But if you notice, like, every window in the building is dirty. And the reason for that is it's almost impossible to clean them, right? Because you can't get in between the storm windows on, you know, the outside of the old window or the inside of the, the storm windows. So, these, these storm windows were probably put in over 50 years ago. I doubt that they've ever been cleaned, you know, which actually, it, it changes your experience of the building if you never have a clean window.
Question about the HVAC. So, I know that our community care scan office always called this room freezing cold. Is this all controlled by the thermostat on the wall, the Select Board room?
Yeah, I believe so, actually.
Okay. There is one here?
There's some sort of thing here that I think Duncan has messed with a few times. But when, when it's operating, the streamers on that one will move a little tiny bit. These streamers don't move at all. And in the office, it's much warmer. Somehow it gets as far as the office and stops.
So, we're talking about replacing all of the heating, ventilating, and air conditioning equipment in the building because it's time. It really hasn't been done in at least 30 years. And there is no central control in the building at all.
And the new HVAC system that they're envisioning would allow us to heat and cool zones at a time?
Yes.
So, we would be able to really much more efficiently control the temperature of the building.
Right, not have to heat the entire top floor just because there are people...
Exactly.
Stay low except for two afternoons a week. We have a device here that measures the humidity and the temperature, and we've recording it for over two years now. So, we could easily demonstrate just how extreme the changes are.
One question about, what is the plan for the, what is the plan for the windows? They're all gonna be replaced?
Yes. So, we had extensive conversations, I've got, I've got one. We've had extensive conversations about the window, and I'll show you the windows. I'll, I'll show you what a previous iteration of the Town Center Committee decided to do as an experiment on the, the landing of the stairwell. The choices are to rebuild the windows, you know, to restore them or to replace them. And, and each of those have consequences. They're both expensive and, and a big impact on the building. But if you restore them, what, what you need to do is you need to take all of those 77 windows out. You need to sandblast, you need to take all the glass out, sandblast all of the, the sash, the wooden part of the window, and then rebuild it, and put it back together, paint it, and then rebuild it, the, the window frame to put it back in, and have some kind of storm. So...
Well, we can't reuse the glass?
We could.
Oh, I thought you said we couldn't.
You could re, you could take the glass out and then put it back in.
Okay.
And I, I think that's what we did on the, on the stairwell.
Okay, good. Because, I mean, as you said, it does look cool.
It is kind of cool. The wavy glass is cool. I've got it in my house. But that's, it's really intensive. There are very few people who can do it in the state. The two windows that we did on the stairwell, I think it took three or four months. Were you on that committee, Karen? You weren't on that committee.
I do recall that practically Sally.
Yeah. It took three or four months anyways. Sally Fishburne, I think, was the one who did it. She did a great job, but it still has issues, you know. I'll show you, one of the storms is, has been off for over two years because it's so hard to put it on. And Amy's husband tried to put it on, now he works for the town, tried to put it on a couple of weeks ago, and he almost broke his thumb because it's really heavy. These windows are really heavy. They're big. They're eight feet tall. So, we went round and round and, and talked about it, and what we've decided is that replacement windows, rather than restored windows, would be much, much, much more functional. And it costs about the same. It's not, it's not a money issue, but it is much more functional. And so...
And those need, really need storms for the replacement?
No. So, there'll be double pane windows, and you won't need storms. And so, that, that makes it much easier to operate and easier to clean and be much more functional. And, you know, we talked to the occupants of the building, and they would prefer it as well.
So, is, with that kind of windows, is there any problem with moisture getting between the two panes?
There shouldn't be.
Which happens frequently with double pane windows, and the moisture gets in there, and then you get the clouding. Any thoughts about that?
Oh, then they would be replaced, you know. So, you know, they, they would be clad windows, so they wouldn't need to be painted, which is another maintenance issue. And, you know, new windows, you know, yes. You know, I've had, I've had windows in my house, replacement windows in my house where it can get in between. If it's within the warranty period, they'll replace it. You can, you can replace the, the glass in a, in a, in a new window as well. You know, it's another one of the maintenance issues that, that the building would need to deal with. One of the things that this committee has talked about a lot is the importance of trying to come up with a maintenance plan for all of our buildings in town, because we really don't have one. You know, we have a, our town manager is probably falls on his, his job description along with everything else that he does. And we feel that it's important to come up with a routine maintenance schedule for, for this building, no matter whether it was new or restored. That's the one thing that this committee has done since we started, is, is to deal with some of the deferred maintenance that's been in this building and in the library. We've been meeting for five years, and we've done a number of projects over at the library from deferred maintenance.
So, with new windows, do you have to put new frames?
Yes.
All have to be new?
It would have to be.
And are those new windows, are you contemplating them being more energy efficient?
Oh, like way more energy efficient. So, one of the ways that these windows work is that there's a weight. There's a, there's a cavity in each, each side of the building, and there's a lead weight so that you can lift it. You can, in some places, there are still some ropes, not everywhere, which is one of the reasons it's so hard to, to lift them. And with a replacement window, we can eliminate that cavity, which would make the whole window frame, and, and insulate it, which would make the whole window frame a whole lot more efficient. And these storms, they slow the wind down, they don't stop it, and it's not a dead airspace, so it's not a whole lot of insulation, you know. That's what the, that's what double pane windows do, is they create a dead airspace. So, yes, it would be...
I can see that I've started caulking.
Yeah.
On the edges there.
Just to slow the drafts down.
Yeah.
You know, there's a lot, this is a very drafty building.
Okay. And the new windows are this kind of windows?
Yes, they would be double hung windows, and they, 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 hopefully, you wouldn't be able to tell much different from what the original windows were, the narrow molding in, in the, in the middle. When you, when we go outside, if you can imagine what it would look like without the storm windows, the building from the outside will look a lot different, like a lot better, much more like the original pictures.
One way you'll be able to see it, you have on our slides, we have a presentation of a very similar building to ours.
Would you please, microphone?
Oh.
We, we have a slide where you can, I think, get a, a good idea about this. We have a picture of a building from down in Hartford before it was restored. They're, they did a very similar renovation to what we're envisioning, and you'll see a huge difference in their old windows and their, their new windows.
Right, their new one looks great.
Yeah, it's beautiful, yeah.
Is one of the goals to have it look like it did before or not? Does that matter? I mean, if you had...
Absolutely.
...windows or something, would that...
Absolutely. One of our goals would be to have it restored to look like it did originally back in the 1911s. I've got, I've got old mic. So, we, you know, we think it'll actually be substantially different. It'll change the, it's hard to imagine without it being there, but it'll change what the, the whole campus looks like.
This is a National Historic Site building or not?
It is not, it's not on the National Register. It's on, it's on the State Register, I believe. I think that, that's what we've determined.
So, that constrains a little bit of cost medically what we can do to the outside, right?
No. So, we had to go through this with the, with the window question. The Historic Preservationists would, would like us to restore the existing windows, which would be an expensive proposition, and they would not be as functional. What we have decided as a committee anyways is that replacement windows would work much better for us, and we don't have a restriction. We're not getting any grants from Historic Preservation Grants at the moment anyways. We don't anticipate, we've applied for several, but we haven't gotten any. And so, we would prefer to do replacement windows.
I have a question because we can see at the roof. We're not in the post office part of the building, but we're looking at it. As part of the renovation, are we looking at any kind of replacing some or all of the roof here or there? Or are we gonna try to keep the roof as it is?
The roof on the, the historic building was replaced, I don't know, I want to say five or six years ago. And so, this roof is actually good. And no, we're not planning on doing anything with this roof.
Okay.
That roof is terrible. So, the, the post office, the post office roof has, I think, less than an inch of insulation on it, and the rafters are undersized and, and couldn't accommodate more insulation if we wanted to put it on because of snow load. So, the plan is actually to reinforce the rafters, which is, makes the post office project a pricey project to deal with some of the deficiencies on the post office. And we want to, if we're gonna do this, we are not including solar panels on the, the post office roof for the bond right now, but we want to make the roof strong enough to accommodate that in the future. So, this would be the time to do that. This, this roof is, I can't remember how old it is, but it's time for replacement. It's definitely time for replacement, as well as many of the mechanicals that are out there.
If you come around here with a thermal camera, you're gonna see a huge amount of heat coming in, being lost to the roof.
Yes, absolutely. So, you know, we anticipate reducing the load on this building quite a bit.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Should we keep going?
Mention the seniors.
Oh, seniors. So, we, we don't need to get into that office, but this office down here is where the senior center is. And so, the senior center and the Historical Society were, we decided when the school district left this space, we went through a process to decide who could use the space, and, and the senior center and the Historical Society were chosen. The senior center, to my mind, is a brilliant concept where all they need and all they asked for was an office space.
With a lot.
You know, that, they don't need a building. They, they use existing buildings in, in their communities for their program space. So, they're happy with that amount of space, and we can accommodate that pretty easily.
Right. And one thing we didn't stop and look at is the space for, for our community care scan. Back in the Select Board Room, you know, there, there was three rooms behind the door.
Yes.
And so, just as people are watching at home, one of the additional organizations that we host is our community care scan.
Yes, yes.
Which does have a very nicely, Suzanne Painter did a great job, Parent did a great job cleaning it up, and it's actually right behind the screen.
Yeah. That's, that's where the superintendent's office was.
Yeah.
That's the coroner office. And we hope to be able to accommodate that as well. Again, it's a, it's a small office space. One of the funny things about these office spaces is that in many cases, they're either too big or too small, you know. You know, Josh's office used to accommodate three different, you know, desks and three different people, and now it's just him, you know. And so, some of them are small, and this one, this office had three people in it, which would have been too small, you know. So, by starting over essentially, by, you know, changing the configuration, we'll be able to accommodate everybody, I think. So, you know, I don't know if that was a classroom or punishment room. I don't know. There was a, there was a...
Either it was the principal's office.
It's, it's scary. Right now, it's just storage, and it's the access to the, the attic. You know, I don't, we don't have a good plan for that. You know, it doesn't, it wouldn't have handicap access. The elevator wouldn't get to it. We don't have a particular plan for it. One of the, the benefits to this building is it actually has quite a bit of storage. And storage is not nothing, you know. So, like, we're, you know, we're looking at, while we can't occupy the basement, we can use it for storage. And it's, that might be its highest and best use anyways.
After municipal buildings are either constructed or renovated, the largest complaint we hear when we ask me if you could change anything, what we should have done different question, number one, storage.
More storage.
There's never enough storage.
There's never enough storage. And so, you know, we...
Even in this age where everything is digitized, there's still a need for storage, which is always underestimated.
It's like George Carlin's thing about stuff. Have you ever heard that one? We have stuff, and we have more places to put the stuff and, on dog meat. But yes, having dry storage that's accessible, you know, sometimes people, if we need people to be able to get up there, it has to be ADA compliant. You know, we have to have access to that. So, this is a problematic space.
Well, you don't have to have ADA access to every place in the building. You need to have ADA access for the public.
Right.
Yeah.
So, the public isn't going into the spooky room.
And you wouldn't want to go up there anyways, believe me. A, an Historic Preservationist did do these windows, and she did a really nice job. You know, and she had to completely rebuild the buildings, the, the windows. It's, it's copper flashing, you know, it's beautifully done. But it still has this challenge with the, with the storm window. That's been sitting here for two years, that, that storm window panel. And if you pick it up, it weighs about 50 pounds. And, you know, getting it up and down, like I say, Duncan almost lost his thumb with it. And that's the reason it's off, is because it's so hard to put it back in. So, you know, a functional replacement window would work much better.
And what's this boarding here?
It's to catch the snow coming off the roof. The, the upper roof, it's, it's a long drop.
So, the snow impacts that instead of impacting the roof proper?
Yeah.
Because, you know, 500 pounds dropping out at once on this versus that?
So, it disperses the impact, right? Carries the weight load real lighter.
Where does the water go when it melts?
Post office.
You can see, you know, it's been patched quite a few times. It's definitely time to replace the roof.
All flat roofs leave, old flat roofs leave a lot.
Yeah.
So, is it going to be flat?
Do you mind what it would be like?
But it has more than an inch of insulation, which is what's in there now. There's only an inch of insulation.
How come it's not made it slanted? So, the water runs off?
Is it going to be slanted at all?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
So, it's not going to be as flat as it will be, as it is now?
Well, it's slanted now. I mean, it does, it does shed water. Oops.
Okay, from a layman's perspective, it looks flat, but if it's a five degree angle, we can't see that.
If you look at the ridge line over there, the roof line, you can actually see it.
You can see the air conditioning condenser units are on inclined planes so that they're level.
Yeah.
You're right, it is.
And those air conditioning units are way beyond their useful life. I keep.
There's a photo in a 1957 yearbook, or somewhere around there, of the outside of the building taken from the parking lot. And the icicles on the post office, which was then classroom, reach almost to the ground.
Which will give some pretty good points.
And does the water, does it go straight out to over where people come in and out of the building?
No, there are no doors on that side.
Well, there's the big doors for taking mail in and out. It's not, not doors for human.
There's a roof extension over there in the back.
So, you want to ask that question again?
So, where does the water go when it goes off the roof exactly?
So, it, it does go towards the parking lot in the back and there's overhangs over the doors that are access from this side, both the loading dock and there's a door next to the loading dock. This is a really cool feature. This is what, this is one of the things that the committee is really excited about. Because of that, the enclosed stairwell that we're adding, we're able to take out this wall, this big wall at the bottom of the stairs, which would expose the tin ceiling and the foyer where the town clerk's office is. It would really, it would change, it would change the character of the inside of the building a lot. I mean, I remember when it was like that. My son went to school here. And it would change it a lot. The stairway is actually kind of interesting, you know, on two sides. And you would see that coming in from the, from the street or it going to the town clerk's office.
We already get in the way.
Probably not, so you've been looking.
We went to school here, they had school.
We wanted to try to.
Classes were going on on the staircase.
We wanted to try to create a visual for that, you know, what this would look like with that wall not there. But the architect really couldn't come up with it that would make any sense. So, you kind of have to imagine it. It's one of the values of this tour, is that, you know, if you can imagine what that would look like without that wall, it's, it really changes this space.
It'll also make the echo here a little bit more and more noise coming in from people going up on steps.
That's possible. You know, the, we may not go to all tin ceilings for that very reason, for, for noise attenuation. So, you know, that's a detail that we'll, we'll work out when we have final, the final floor plan. You know, some offices won't want tin ceilings, you know. Maybe the town clerk might not want it for exactly that reason.
And you've got a list of which rooms had asked for disco vaults, right?
So, is the space going to remain as open as it is or could it be used for something?
It could be used. You know, I kind of like it, you know, personally. I kind of like it being open because it has a nice foyer. But potentially, you know, that's, again, you know, where the walls go, you know, could change.
The architect had mentioned one time that the feature that he'd most like to keep in the building is this central hallway. Thinking about having that open and reopening up the transoms that are over all of the doorways that have been painted over and make this space so dark.
Yeah, yeah.
So, he thought that that was the one place he'd like to stay historically correct. Now, that can change, obviously.
Jeff, would you be looking to do anything with this space here? Would we be looking to do anything with this space here? I mean, I know it's not ADA compliant, so it can't be the main entry to the building, but any plans for this?
Likely not. You know, likely not changing it. The, oh, I don't know, about 10, 15 years ago, we, the town rebuilt the portico out here. It needs some repair right now. But it's actually, the portico is spectacular. It's really, it's really nice. So, no, we want to keep that.
Well, sure, but maybe do we want to open it up more, make it? Right now, it's just a place hardly anybody ever goes.
Yeah, and I would like to see it used more. I would, I would like.
That's my same thought. I mean, this is the grand entrance to the building.
It really is. You know, you know, we could weather strip the doors a little bit better. And, you know, the finishes on the inside of the building is all kind of up for grabs. You know, I've, I've got a whole bunch of ash boards from, in my barn that came from trees that were cut down in town, but I'd love to see used for trim.
Yeah, it seems like if you're lacking in space, then you want to use all the space. If you have more tenants than you have room for.
So, that's, you know.
And this would be a place, you know, this is a space and this is a space and can we use them?
And so, I think it's, you know, that's a kind of a political question. It's not, it's not a money question as far as, you know, doing a bond. And I think what the committee wanted to do was, was to come up with a number that we could go to bond with. And the select board will have to grapple with, you know, who actually uses the space, you know, and what the final, the final design is on that. We'll be discussing it actually on Monday a little bit. Radiate's going to be coming in on Monday to discuss that issue. And if the bond doesn't pass, then there's nothing to decide. So, if the bond does pass, then we have, you know, more decisions.
Some interesting possibilities too in this space, and we talked about it as a committee, is that it opens up a lot of really neat ideas for display space, whether it's, you know, more opportunity for the Historical Society to display, whether it's community artwork, whether it's gathering space, that there's definitely a lot of opportunity for that.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's take a look at the old, what used to be our conference room. So, I think this is another example of an office that's too big, you know. You know, it's, it's, there's only three, three people working here and it's a, it's a, it's a big space.
Actually, only two people.
Two people.
You want to give a little history on how this came to be?
Yeah.
So, pre-COVID, there was actually three people working in my office, which is currently my office, which is way too small for three people. But then, post-COVID, we started to realize it really is too small for three people. So, we moved that, two people over here, one person into an office in Linda's, the town clerk's office. Then I moved into the other office, which is too big for one person. So, we've sort of been cobbling it together, using existing space. But a redesign with proper space for, proper number of people could really be helpful.
Yeah. So, we, we would hope that this would return to the conference room that the select board met before COVID. And we hope to be able to remove these, the posts that are in the middle of it. You know, again, if you're going to do the whole thing, then, you know, our philosophy from the get-go was to do it right. This is, you know, this, this building hasn't really been touched in a substantial way, you know, in 20, 30 years. And then, even then, it was not, you know, not finished quality restoration. We want to do this for the ages, really, you know. It's a legacy project. So. So, one of the first things that the committee did was we did a building assessment. We started four or five years ago, we did a building assessment. We hired Bread Loaf out of Middlebury to do a complete walk-through through this building and a couple of other buildings in town. And, where was I going with that? Oh, that they identified a number of deficiencies. We have a pretty good report about some of the deficiencies. Since the committee's been meeting for four or five years, we find more deficiencies all the time. And right up to like last week, no, it was Thursday, I think. We had, we had a duct cleaning company come and clean out the ducts in the town clerk's office. And I'll show you why that was necessary. This will be one of the more challenging aspects of the construction project, is that, you know, for most of our staff, we've gotten good at actually doing remote work. You know, that's one of the positive things that came out of the pandemic, is that, you know, we've learned how to do work from home. Well, most of our staff can do that, except the town clerk, because we can't move the vault, you know. We can't take the vault home. So, we'll have to figure that out. We'll have to schedule it. And they'll, you know, that'll be, the construction will be inconvenient. There's, there's no doubt about it. But, you know, not sure there's a great alternative. What we did on Thursday is we had a duct cleaning company come in specifically for this room. And they had, Linda had to close. And she gave notice and she set up appointments for when people could come in and look at the, use the vault. The reason why we had a duct cleaning in this, in this particular room, and they did clean it. I can tell they cleaned it because this diffuser right here, it was black.
Yep, just take this down.
It was, it was black. And the way Linda showed me at one point, I think she didn't clean it. So, like, if you take your finger there, you can get, you know, some black soot. And she said she was doing that weekly. I'm going, that's not okay. You can't have black soot. And so, we had the ducts cleaned, we bought a, an air purifier. And it's kind of one of the examples of, it's not just deferred maintenance, it's just old equipment, you know. And, and it's, it's time to replace some of this equipment. It's really been a long time. If you're going to do, if you've, when you're walking through the building, if you look at how many diffusers there are, places where the ventilation comes, comes out, it's everywhere. They're all over the place. So, you can't just replace one section. You need to kind of think of it in a much more holistic way. And if you're going to do that, then why not do the lighting as well? You know, so all the lights are different colors. They're, they're, that's older technology. If you're going to do that, you might as well put in a sprinkler system. You know, when else are you going to do any of that? You know, it's.
And the, having 1913 era ductwork and no HEPA filters, that's potentially some serious health consequences for the people working.
Absolutely. So, you know.
Okay, I will pause it. So, having 1913 era ductwork and no HEPA purifier can have serious health consequences for the people who work here. I mean, sick building syndrome is a thing. And I've never heard that this building's been described as having that. But all things considered, you want good, clean, fresh air for your employees.
Yeah, we learned during the pandemic that, you know, having fresh air is like really important. And we have no fresh air ventilation in this building at all. The, all of the heating and ventilating equipment is all recirculating. So, the only fresh air that we get from this building is coming through those leaky windows. So, if you were to replace the windows and make them tight, you'd exacerbate that problem. You'd make it worse if you didn't replace the heating system. If you replace the heating system without replacing the windows, you're going to be heating half of the outdoors. So, you know, those, those are two are very expensive projects and they have to be done together. You can't do one without doing the other. So, why don't we go outside?
Maybe if only once when the neighbors have their wood stoves going, she can smell the smoke sitting in her desk.
Yeah.
So, what was the black stuff? Was it soot or dirt or?
Or mold or?
What was it?
We didn't test it. I don't know. It felt like soot. Okay, and, you know, I don't know how, did you see, Josh, what they, what came out of when they cleaned it?
I don't know exactly.
And the air exchanging system, that's going to be something that heats the air as it comes in?
Yes. So, what we have requested of the architects to specify is high efficiency heating and ventilating equipment that would have energy recovery ventilation that would be the most energy efficient that we could get. What, you know, we would like to go to net zero for this building. I don't think we can quite get there, but we can make it much, much more efficient. You know, if we were to put solar on the roof of the historic building and in the post office, we can probably get to two thirds of our electric load over the course of a year.
So, this is going to be a dumb question because you've probably said it twice. The heat for this building, is there a furnace downstairs?
There's a boiler.
There's a boiler, okay. And what fuel is it using? Is it oil or propane?
It's natural gas.
Natural gas. Okay, so I'm sure you've run the numbers on how much we're currently spending to heat this place. And you've probably run the numbers on how much you think it would cost to heat this place properly insulated. It seems to me like that's got to be some pretty significant savings that'll pay for themselves pretty quickly.
Well.
You'd hope.
Pay for itself is hard. I think my recollection is, is that we spend $6,000 to $8,000 a year to heat the building, which, you know, in the grand scheme of things is not a lot. Even if you saved all of that, you know, it's probably not going to offset the entire cost of, you know, doing the renovation, replacing, it won't, it won't offset the cost of the windows.
Well, no, no, but in terms of the money you're basically throwing into the outdoors, you'll be recovered. It just doesn't make sense not to do this.
You know, a lot of this project is about, if you're going to do some of it, you really should do all of it, you know. You're going to be, there's no way to do this project without spending a significant amount of money. Doing a piecemeal would be more expensive than doing the whole project.
And are you going to talk more about the HVAC system or is this a good time to talk about it? I mean.
We can talk about it.
What is the heating system going to be and where is it going to be located? Since it won't be in the basement.
No. So, we have, one of the floodproofing aspects of the project is we have to move the mechanicals out of the basement. That's according to flood regulations. And so, if we're going to move them, we have to find another place for it. So, we're taking a corner of the post office and making it a mechanical room. We'll put in heat pumps, you know, an advanced heat pump system that actually takes, takes it and distributes the heat and the cooling through a hydronic system, a water-based system that would have coils in each of the ventilation ducts. So, it was described to us as a high efficiency system. Hybrid, I think, is what they called it.
Yeah. Jake knows more about that, unfortunately.
Yeah. One of the members of our committee, Jake Maron, works for Efficiency Vermont. And he's been actually quite helpful in helping us understand the different options for heating and ventilating equipment.
So, is there a backup system or it's entirely air source heat pumps?
It would be, it would be heat pumps, it would be air source heat pumps. No, there wouldn't be a backup system. The building is actually insulated better than you might think. Over the past 20 years, 20, 25 years, we've done several efficiency projects on the building. So, there is blown-in insulation in the walls. There's quite a bit of insulation up in the attic that we did. We cut the heating bills by over a third when we did.
The windows are just.
They're just a big loss. They're, they're, it's, there are 77 of them in the building.
When Efficiency Vermont recommended a guide to us for our house up in Jonesville, just the act of putting in good insulation dropped our heating bills by over 50%.
Yeah.
And the heat pumps are working great. The one reservation is when it gets to be 20 below zero, we're really glad we have our oil furnace to fall back on.
Yeah, that's true.
The question about what is your failover on those ridiculously cold days? There's a point where heat pumps have, have trouble.
Yep. So, where we are at right now is the boilers in the basement, they're about half their useful life. I think they're 10, 12 years old, maybe a little bit older. And the useful life on a boiler of this scale is probably 20, 25 years. If we're going to take them out and then have to move them someplace else and reinstall them, is it worth doing that, you know? What, what, what we heard a lot from people that, when we, before we got the architect and we did a visioning process and asked people what they want, climate change and efficiency were big concerns for, for the public. So, we wanted to get rid of fossil fuel heating equipment. We're told that we can do that. There may be a time, a few hours during the course of a year, if it's below zero, and it might be not as warm as you'd like it to be in this building. We, we experience that right now, you know. That happens.
It gets chilly in certain parts.
It does get chilly at certain parts. You know, so, you know, this is not a place that you sleep in, although Josh might on occasion, I don't know. But I, there, there could be, with the current technology, there could be times that it wouldn't be as. wouldn't be as comfortable as you'd like it.
Okay.
You know, that's fair to, but we think it's worth it to, to go to a fossil-free, this is the time you would do it. You'd have, you know, if you're gonna be doing the whole building, you have to make those decisions now.
Can you imagine being in one?
The, the bones of the building are actually quite good. The foundation is good. It's a new roof on the historic building. There's a little bit of repointing that, that could be done, but they, you know, we looked at whether or not we should tear this building down and build a new building on site. What we learned is that, A, it would be a lot more expensive, likely millions of dollars more expensive than to do a renovation. And, and you'd be throwing all of that away. You know, there's a lot of embedded energy in this, in, in this structure. And it seemed just incredibly wasteful to us to do that, not to mention it's of historic value. Lori Dana, who's on our, our committee, she's a library trustee as well, she'll take us through what the, the site plan is.
I'll try to do this quickly. So there's a considerable amount of work that's also is proposed for the site, for this parking lot. One of the first things that the landscape architect said about our parking lot is that there's way too much driving space and not enough parking space in the way it's configured. So if you can imagine, the entrance to the parking lot stays virtually the same, but the crosswalk between the two buildings moves back and becomes a much more safe marked crosswalk between the two buildings. Cause we, we have a lot of people who come, they go to the post office, they go to the library, they go to the town center, a lot of crossing. There's an additional green space so that on the bridge, on the Bridge Street side of the thing, of the street, there's a green space and a vent lawn that could even have a pavilion over it and be program space for the library or for communities. Then it moves the handicapped parking for the library off of Bridge Street and moves that parking next to the library and creates a new handicapped entrance to the library that comes directly off of the parking lot. So, and it's a, it's a switchback sort of ramp that goes up. It also moves the handicapped parking for this building, which is now across there, over here, so that it's next to the building and a person doesn't have to cross the driving lane to get here into the, the side of the building. And then it maintains those 60, I think it's 66 parking spaces now and adds, the drawing has trees, but it adds some more plantings to make the area more attractive. There are some parts of the site plan work that relate to stormwater runoff and the flood mitigation, so that, that's all taken into account too on the parking. Do you have anything else? Yep?
I'd love to show you the hole into the, into the, into the post office, over on the, in this corner.
So when we were talking about the roof earlier, we were talking about how it slopes down here. And then, as you can see, we do have entrances, but we do have these diversion systems so that the ice and water are not gonna be coming right down on here.
But it is pretty miserable. So in July, we would be underwater right now. The, the parking lot was, was full of water here. Underneath the post office, where the cinder blocks are, that's a tunnel. There's a tunnel that goes all around the perimeter of the post office and that's where the heating pipes are, currently are. What we're proposing doing is filling that tunnel in because, see, that's, this is, this is, you could, you could stick the camera in here and you could see the tunnel, right? And this is where the water came into the building, you know, during the flood. And it filled up that tunnel and that's, that's what went to the boiler room. So it did have, we did have water in the boiler room. Not a lot, but, you know, there was, there was about that much water in the boiler room after the flood. So this is, this is a difficult part of the project, because you essentially have to trash the inside of the post office in order to fill it. You can't fill it from the outside, you have to fill it from the inside. So we have to demolish the, the covering on it and then, and then fill it from the inside. And then, you know, the, the new heating system would be different than what we have now. Does that make sense to folks?
Is, is this tunnel like head height?
No.
It's a crawl space?
It's a crawl space. It's kind of miserable, really. Gary, Gary and Mary Hool actually went to school together here and Gary talks about running around down, down there back in the day when he was a kid.
Andrew said there was still standing water like three weeks after the flood down there.
Yeah. So there are so many reasons why that's not a good thing.
But the rats enjoy it.
They do.
And it's the mold.
Yeah. So and this parking lot will be at the same level? You're not planning to like raise it or something?
No. It would be at the-
It'll just flood and then there'll be water in it and then it'll go-
It, it, we'll likely reconfigure the entire parking lot so that it, the, the parking layout will be different and, and there'll be stormwater management, better stormwater management. We'll likely fill up, I think the property line is back further, so they'll, they'll, we'll increase the size of the parking lot back here so we can reduce it up front.
Yeah.
And we're not looking at solar canopies this decade?
No. Solar canopies are difficult. For one, they're expensive and two, they make it plowing much more difficult. So I don't think Pete would like them. Here, come on. Okay, you can, it's about, replace, it's about that high. They replaced the sheet rock down here.
Oh, that's ridiculous. That's ridiculous.
Now Jeff, how high did the water get down here with the sun pumps?
Right about there. So, you know, they, they replaced that sheet rock. So this is the tunnel that goes around the bottom of the, of the post office. Goes around three sides on the, on the post office and those pipes are the heating pipes that come from this boiler room and then go and distribute the heat around the post office. Since we're changing it all and putting the, you know, doing a mechanical room at the one end of the, of the post office addition, we won't need this. And we can fill it so that it doesn't fill with water. And deal with the dirt floors. I hate the dirt floors. This was, I think that was a coal bin. I think that originally was a coal bin. This is a coal boiler.
I'm not sure. I think they're a tender beer or something.
And there's not enough time.
But yeah, as you can see.
They must be pretty high efficiency if they're down to plastic.
They are. They're better. So they're, they're, they're much better. So there used to be a boiler that was covered in asbestos.
Yeah.
You know, then we got rid of that about 15 years ago.
Asbestos is the bestest.
Yeah.
Well, it employed a lot of people with the need.
All right.
This is the mechanical room for the, for the elevator.
Yeah.
We're relocating this, but using the same, same technology, is my understanding.
Yes. We looked at a more efficient elevator, but it was gonna mean building a bigger shaft for the elevator and that was a huge expense, like several hundred thousands of dollars to do that.
This is a classroom.
This was a classroom.
Yeah. Where is it? Where is it? Always, here it is. So, this is, this is our community care's storage.
Yeah. Here in the attic.
Hello. Oh my God. So this is all the storage. This is all the space stored in here now.
This is, this is storage for our community cares camp. We, we would be allowed to continue to store down here. We have to change the storage system. It has to be materials that won't rot, like metal, instead of, instead of wood.
If you put in sheet rock, it has to be metal, but still could be used.
You know, and it's adequate storage for this stuff, if, you know, if this were to flood, you know, it wouldn't be a, a huge financial loss. Be messy, but it wouldn't be a huge financial loss.
Right, so we can keep this as it is?
We could. We have to change the structure of the, the storage and, and change the, this is underneath the, the, what's now planting and zoning, the, the old-
We can't have any material, we can't have any materials in the basement that would absorb water and mold, so you can't have sheet rock or wood. That's why they're talking about changing these out to metal support studs and we could have metal shelving, all metal shelving and be fine.
Oh, another flood mitigation measure that, you know, I didn't, you know, I wouldn't have known. So if, if the groundwater gets up high enough, it can create pressure on, on the foundation. And in order to alleviate that pressure, in some portion of the basement, there'll be a valve to allow floodwater to come in actually, rather than do structural damage. That's what the engineer has recommended.
Yes. Pressure release valves. I think they have two or three.
Yeah, they might. So, you know, again, it's, the, if you're gonna deal with this building, you really should deal with some primary issues like flooding, you know, and like ventilation.
So jacking the whole building up?
No.
Not an option?
Yeah, not an option. Not, not one that we looked at.
No. So if you're gonna have to remove these, can you rearrange the-
Yeah, that's-
-holes in the, yes.
The architects were very interested in doing that. They, they, you know, as far as the meeting room upstairs, the poles are really in the way.
Yeah.
So that, yes, they really want to do that. It probably will involve steel, you know, some kind of steel structure in, in the ceiling to do that. But yeah, that's the plan. Okay. Oh, and the, the noise over here that you're getting is the, our community care's dehumidifiers. We can do that in a more efficient way, I'm sure.
It's still pretty damp down here.
We can do it more effectively and cheaper.
And that's civil worship, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Actually, the radiate, that's how radiate heats their space. It's terrible, it's really noisy.
Yeah.
They did a nice job in here.
I mean, I don't, you know-
You know, I like this space.
Unfortunately, we can't keep it.
Unfortunately, we can't use it. But, you know, I mean, it's, it's, a lot of ways that this is kind of a scary space. That's the egress.
Right.
Right? That's not so great.
No, that's not great.
And, you know, you saw where the, the, the elevator comes down? It's not handicapped access, you know? So this is not ADA accessible space. The windows are sketchy at best.
So this would become storage.
This would become storage.
Oh, I thought there were paintings over the windows. Are these the windows?
Some of them are and some of them aren't. They, they took some of them out so they could get some light down here.
Oh, yeah.
We actually replaced a couple of windows in the past year.
Yeah, the one far left and far right, they used to be boards off-
So they could use them.
... when they wanted to return to programming.
Yeah.
They took the boards off, we renovated, refurbished the windows so they could have more light and ventilation.
Okay.
We've done most of, you know, we've gone through most of this presentation.
Okay. Yeah.
You know, I think, this is the Hartford building that was, that Amy mentioned. Hartford is White River Junction and that very similar era school building that, that they renovated for the town offices. We took a tour of that building, right Josh?
Yeah, I had a chance to stop by, two years ago now. And it's like a whole new building when you walk through it. I'll be honest, I was a little skeptical of like, what is renovation gonna do after working in the building? But walking through that building, it feels like a brand new building. I talked to staff that worked there before and after renovation, they were very happy with the workspace that was created for them after the renovation. They did a really nice job to kind of incorporate the old, but also everything inside is all crisp and neat and new, new ventilation, new storage, new everything. They also included some of the historical aspects throughout the design. That's just their unique design, but it was really nice and it looks like a great building and really functional.
Well, should have taken the after picture, like, like the old picture. I mean, you can do a lot with lights to make the building look cool, right?
But it really is.
And there's no comparison between those two pictures, really.
Well, yeah.
You can make a comparison photo if you really wanna do it, but-
But yeah, and all their conference rooms are, are very modern, hybrid conference rooms, like, good for being in person and also good for being virtual. It's really a nice type of building.
It looks like they took out the couple over the central entrance, or the gable, whatever that's called.
They, they filled in, in between the two different sections of the building with a glass wall, which is interesting, which really did modernize the building and brought a lot of light in. One of the original charges for this committee from the select board was if we were going to reuse this building, would be to do it in a way that would make it new. You know, we were comparing between either tearing this building down and building a new building or making this building new. You know, those, those were the two scenarios that the select board at the time wanted us to evaluate. And that's what we are proposing. We are proposing making this building new.
Yeah.
You know, and an old building. So many of the deficiencies that we were, saw.
Yeah.
And we're addressing a lot of them, all of them, really, all of these. And this was the floor plan. They, we're proposing putting the police department up where we're sitting now, in the second of the building, instead of on the, the, the lower floor. And again, that could change, you know, depending on, you know, radiate will be a big question. Where would you put them? I don't know yet.
And the, the police department had a much longer wish list when we, the police department's had the most discussion, I think, of all the parts of this plan, just because the, the opinions and the, the way the police department was configured has been a big question. So they want, I mean, at one point, we looked at a separate entrance, a Sally Port, a holding cell, processing area, that would have pretty much required an addition on the building and, you know, just didn't turn out to be cost effective. But right now, all of that is basically office space, except for the locker room in the back that gives them an opportunity to be able to shower and change their clothes.
Is it two locker rooms, male, female, or?
Um, it's just one locker room. But the locker, yeah, and then there's the bathroom that they can use for change. The shower room is a separate space. That's how it is at, we toured the Heinsberg Police Station and that's, I believe, they have a one gender locker room with a, you know, a shower place that's just-
Go for department or size, I guess that makes sense, but a bigger department, you would need separate.
And it, because it's office space, should things change, it's office space. It could become part of the town offices, it could be more tenant space. If we, for some reason, in 10 or 15 years, didn't have a police department or we had another building where the police department was, that's all useful. It's not-
It's not specific to-
-space that has specific things like Sally Ports and holding cells and all of those things that would be very specific.
This is actually-
Sally Port?
Sally Port is a way you bring prisoners in to the building that's secure, so you would drive into a garage space that you could close.
Okay.
Right now, I don't believe that we're doing any, any processing here. It's all being done in Heinsberg or the state police barracks.
Where would the, you said the fireproof stairwell that we'd be putting in would be somewhere-
That's right there. Right about the gray. Nope, that's it. Yep.
So down this path, where it's the ground level plan, that's the first and second floor.
It's not really ground level, it's a, but a half story up, right?
It's, yeah, it's-
I mean, cause we are used to calling this the third floor, right? But this is like the second floor.
On the plan, on the plan, their first floor, on the plan, the ground floor is the town clerk level. Yes. Right?
And in the basement, with the post office, I mean, the lower level.
But you're right, it's sort of common parlance. We talk about like the post office would be like first floor.
Right.
The town clerk's the second floor and up here is the third floor.[1751.01]
On the plan, there, first floor, on the plan, the ground floor is the town third level. Yes, right?
And in the basement, with the post office, I mean, the lower level.
Yeah.
But you're right, it's sort of common parlance, we talk about like the post office would be like first floor.
Right.
The town clerks is second floor and up here is third floor. That's how we kind of refer.
And then below that, we have the dungeon.
Yeah, and that's how the signage is, I think, when you.
Now we're going to talk about it like there's two floors.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we could, or we could go, I mean, this is the architectural.
Yeah.
It doesn't have. Yeah, I think it'd be, I think it'd be hard to, I think it'd be hard to change tradition.
I know.
Right.
And so the only thing in the post, you'll see the little gray part in the back of the post office, that's the mechanical room.
Right.
And we actually met with the postmistress, that's kind of unused space in that, in there anyway. So the postmistress, that, we've reviewed that with them and it's fine to take that space. It's not actually being used for anything.
Actually, single pane windows over there, without stairs.
Yeah.
Oh, and they renovate the post office bathrooms, so the post office gets.
So they changed the place a little bit, but they pay ninety some thousand a year, so hopefully it won't be that big of a chunk out of the maintenance.
Yeah, yeah.
So is the police department on there somewhere?
Yeah, the blue.
The blue section.
Blue is the third floor, right here.
Oh, the police department is now on there.
Yes, that's right where we're sitting, actually.
Okay, I can.
Yeah.
And this is about.
So much room on the second floor.
And our, our goal was to keep the town offices all together on one floor, which is, the key is the green is town offices.
Okay, yep.
The yellow is the post office, the blue was the police station, purple are meeting rooms and the orange is tenant space. And as I think Jeff said, this is conceptual and that could change depending on as we move forward and the things that we're hearing and what the select board decides.
And that can change even after a bond vote.
It could change after a bond vote, exactly.
So the purple that your mouse just went by, is that the kitchen?
Yeah, that, that's the break room now, I think.
And this purple here is that dubious little space that.
Yeah.
Okay, that cool little space, huh?
Yeah.
The bell used to be there, so.
And, and if we go back to the, okay, so the offices that are literally right behind, well, our community cares camp, that would no longer be available to them, they'd have to go somewhere else in the building.
Correct, correct, so that goes away.
Yeah.
You know, reconfigured.
Yeah, yeah.
So an MMCTV is.
Is that a big orange base right here?
The tenant.
And I have, I have to say, the tenants have been really open to looking at shared, where they can have shared space. I mean, like, the, uh, the senior center and the historical society kind of share the, the board, what's, has the boardroom table and they just schedule their meetings or they use those, that, um, space sometimes to lay things out if they're collating or something, but they've, and, and I think MMCTV is also pretty open to shared spaces.
Yeah, Angelique talked, I talked to Angelique before our meeting today, you know, about her space. And she says, um, right now, a good portion of their space is used up as studio space. And it doesn't necessarily need to be like that. She said that, you know, if we had a fully functional, um, conference room, like where the select board is, should that, you know, or where the select board would be, um, if it were outfitted correctly, you know, she could use that as well. So I think you're right, Laurie, that the, the tenants have been very accommodating. Um, they're very appreciative to be in this, in the space.
Yeah.
It, it, you know, I, I think it, it, it will become a political question of who gets to use the space. If we were to open this up to anybody in town who wants to use the space, it's going to be challenging to go through it. We did come up with criteria early on about what we saw were the priorities and the town office is the top priority. But, um, uh, beyond that, um, it becomes a choice, you know, what's, what, what are the, you know, most important uses of any extra space that we might have?
And the, and the other issue that, I mean, they just moved in, we didn't move walls when the tenants moved in. They just kind of occupied existing spaces. So there is, there is an opportunity to reconfigure it, to make it more useful, to make the shapes of the spaces different, to give them more, more or less storage, you know? They just basically moved into what the school department had done and called it a day.
But the $54,000 question in terms of musical chairs and who's left standing is Radiate.
Yes.
And they need more, I mean, they, they need more space than any other organization up here.
Maybe yes and maybe no. So Judy came and, uh, Judy Bosch came and, and talked to us at our last meeting, was it?
Yeah.
Um, uh, and, uh, and she goes, you know, when we originally interviewed, when the architects originally, uh, interviewed Rebecca, who was the director at the time, uh, for Radiate, you know, she had expansive vision, you know? At one point, she wanted a pottery studio and.
Oh, they're killing, yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, her, her vision was like, Morrisville has, I don't know, I think they have a, a building that's, you know, half the size for their, their arts program, um, which would be great. But, you know, uh, in order to accommodate all that, we would need to, um, put an addition on the building, which we did look at.
But Judy is now saying they might, that they, we've never been, they've never been asked about their minimum requirements.
Okay.
And I think they're going to, they're on, they're on the select board schedule for Monday and I think you may have a, she's been talking about coming up with their, what is their minimum requirement? And are there opportunities to share space? And, yeah, so that's.
And our discussion, when we were talking the other night, was about, um, sort of office, tenant space, office space versus program space. And Radiate might be the only, one of the only programs in the building that might need more specification or design in their space that might be slightly different than just being sort of multi-purpose, multi-purpose office space. Um, but I don't think that their needs were huge either, so.
And I think that we sort of regarded the tenants as fitting up their own space.
Yes.
Once they have the space they're given, they, you know, as with any tenant, they do their own fit up of shelving or whatever they have.
I did talk to the architect yesterday and, you know, about this issue, because I wanted to, um, alert them that, you know, there could be, you know, additional questions on design. But the architects have been terrific to work with.
Yeah.
They really have been, uh, quite responsive to all of our questions. Uh, like I say, I think we had at least a dozen different iterations of all of this, which was, you know, slightly beyond what their original contract was. Um, it, if, if we were to go through this exercise again, um, it's, it would probably be beyond our existing contract, which is still doable, um, but they're about a thousand dollars a day, you know? So that would be a decision we would.
We'd do carefully.
You know, yeah, but, you know, that, that, that's doable. He, he also said that, you know, if you were to take, for example, eliminate the, um, the locker room shower piece of the, uh, of the police department, the Radiate reconfiguration would probably be less expensive. You know, because they don't need, you know, that, all of that equipment, you know, and so, you know, that's a possibility. But, you know, we were talking about, we spent a lot of time talking about the police and, you know, police has been in flux the entire time that we, this committee has been formed. Uh, and it's still in flux, I mean, it still hasn't landed yet. Using other towns for some of our services, like, uh, prisoner processing, is like really useful. And it, it, it allows us not to have to build that here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you guys are probably sick of hearing me talk about shared police departments, but I'm still hoping that that's the direction we go in, because it just doesn't make sense for towns, Bolton, Huntington, us, Heinsberg. I mean, the state police aren't going to be serving those towns anymore. So we need to gang together and find a solution that'll work.
Yeah. So what else we guys, we, we.
Do have handouts for all of.
How they do the financials.
Wanted to do this.
Do this.
So, do you want me to do this? I can do this.
Yeah, sure, go for it.
Uh, so David Healy is, uh, another member of our committee and his profession is, is construction management. Uh, he does it for, um, uh, primarily healthcare. Uh, so he has quite a bit of construction experience and he's been really helpful in helping us, you know, understand these numbers. Um, the, the building construction is expensive, there's no doubt about it. Um, but, um, uh, we were not able to identify a whole lot to cut out. You know, if you're going to do one piece of it, you know, this would be the time to do the other piece of it. You know, I, I talked a lot about the windows and the heating and ventilating system. You really can't do one without doing the other. And that applies to a whole bunch of aspects of the building, including sprinkling, you know? So like, if you're going to be cutting the, the, the ceilings in the, in the space, that's the time to put in a sprinkler system.
And we, we just put in sort of a temporary fire alarm system, because there wasn't really anything in the building.
There was no fire alarm system in the building when this committee started.
So we found an inexpensive way to at least get that to happen. And it actually went off not too long ago. It wasn't a fire, but it did work. But, so again, that's another thing that if you're going to open up all the walls and the ceiling.
The wiring and the plumbing, this is the time to do it, you know?
Is that a requirement? I mean, is this building required to have a sprinkler system, actually, or not really?
I think it's not, it's, it's a little bit of a gray area whether you're required to have a sprinkler, because it's not residential.
Not occupied overnight.
Not like, it's not a, a senior living space. But, 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 you know, for prudence, we, we did have discussions about what things, even if it might not be required, should there be one?
Well, I'm, I'm not a building expert. My idea is that if a building more or less stays its original purpose, it can, it has to comply with the code that was in effect when the building was built.
Yeah.
But at some point, you've modified it enough that you now have to bring it up to current.
More than 50%.
And so is that what we're looking at?
That is what we're looking at. So like, you know, what we are, you know, we're thinking of this building as a new building.
And so a new office space under 2023 code nonetheless does not have to have sprinklers. I, I mean, I don't doubt you, I just.
I, there, I, no, I don't remember getting a real, we kind of just went in that direction. It's pretty expensive and there's some maintenance involved with the sprinkler system.
Do we already have Halon down on the vault or something like that?
Do we have what?
Halon.
I bet they do.
I don't know.
What's Halon?
Oh, I'm sorry, um, Halon is a fire suppression system that does not use water. You use it in places where you have records that you don't want to get sold. Um, it's a gas, and if the presence of Halon, um, fire can't burn, it just.
I think it takes, yeah, it fills out all the oxygen space with the gas that doesn't burn.
I don't know that we have that.
I would doubt it.
I've never heard of that type of, of that system.
You know, until we get all of our records digitized, uh, I'm just putting this out there, I'm not saying, well, because you don't have Halon, this plan's dead. But, you know, record management systems that are still using paper or microfiche or something, it's almost obligatory in this day and age to have a Halon fire suppression system.
It's a good point.
I'm sure, I'm sure it costs something, but, you know, you don't want sprinklers going off over your vault.
Right, that makes good sense. Um, so, um, I think we have talked about most of this. So the post office roof and flood mitigation, it's a lot?
Lisa, in case you want to call Lisa. Sorry.
Sorry, Lisa, Lisa, do you have a question?
Got a question about the sprinkler, is that a dry system, Jeff, or is it a wet system?
Well, I don't know whether it's, so your question is whether, uh, it's empty or full all the time.
Right, well, the reason, reason I ask is, you know, if their sprinkler system is in risk of freezing or whatever, it's usually a dry system that's put in and it, if it's set off, in other words, it's a pressurized, air pressurized system. If it's set off by a fire, uh, head going off, then the valve, you know, floods the system and it sprinkles.
I don't know.
But if it's, if it's all within non-freezing, um, space, then it could be a flooded system, which is, is ready to go anytime.
I wrote both of those, yeah.
Okay.
I have a question, again, speaking as a complete non-building expert. For 7% of the project to be fees, um, required fees, clerk of works, building envelope, commissioning, I'm an expert, but $700,000 for fees, is that typical?
Uh, yeah, that, actually, yeah. And so, uh, the, uh, the architectural fees, I think are like, is four to six percent?
So that includes what we're paying the architect, if it's not governmental.
Engineering fees and all of that.
Okay.
And clerk of the works is the, um, an owner's rep, someone, Josh is not going to manage this. Not, Josh is not going to be the representative of the town managing this.
I thought Doug and Jeff.
Project.
I trust Gavin to go.
And as you, as you know, we've had, we have Jay LaBere, who's been doing the one, the project for library. So that's, that's what that is.
Commissioning is, is about, um, you have, uh, mechanical engineer design the, the system and then you have mechanical contractor install the system. And it's really wise to have a third party look at that and make sure that it, it actually works the way it was designed.
The reason I blinked to this is, you know, when you buy a new car, there is the sticker price on the window and then when you drive it off the lot, you've just paid $4,000 more for these dubious fees that for which you get nothing.
Yeah, I know.
We're not talking about paying licensing and registration, we're talking about the having four wheels fee. And so I was going, how much of that is just bureaucracy at the state level saying, you've got to pay this fee just because? But it sounds like a lot of that is professional services and not.
Professional services. The, how we came up with these numbers is that we, we went through all of the design process and the visioning and all of that. We, and, and then we'd landed on a, 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 a design with the architect and then they put it out to a construction estimator and, and that, if there are some 300 items, uh, that they came up with these numbers, so.
Yeah.
And, you know, the only thing I can guarantee you is it won't cost exactly this much.
Oh, it would.
It'll be different one way or the other, a little bit. But we, what we wanted to do is we wanted, um, to make sure there was enough. Uh, you know, because it's, you know, it's great if you get done with the project and you have money left over. Not so great if you get three quarters of the way through the project and you don't have enough money. That's really problematic, so, um.
And that was why there's a 15% contingency. And that 7.5% inflation allowance.
Right.
Is, as Dave said, they used to not do that at all, but that's to cover the difference in the price of goods between the time the bond passes and the time that it actually constructions start.
Yeah, well, COVID and the floods taught us that sometimes you're going to mess a supply chain issue.
Yeah.
And that's completely out of our control.
That's completely out of our control, you know, so, um, so, yeah, so, um, you know, we think that this, this is more than what we had hoped, you know? I think when we first got this number, we were.
Shocked.
Had some sleepless nights.
Yes.
But, you know, the more we, we have talked about it, the more we have looked at it, we have a hard time coming up with it being less.
Well, furthermore, I, I, as I see it, you have a hard time justifying not doing it, because this building is deficient in so many health and safety ways.
Yeah.
And I used to work in health and safety, so that's what I always talk about. But, I mean, this is not a safe building to occupy or work in. And absent just saying screw it and renting office space in Williston, which we can't do, we don't have an alternative.
Yeah.
I think that.
There's no vacant space in Richmond we can just migrate to.
Right.
The, the, the good news is that this is in exactly the right location for our town. It is the, the, the physical town center for the town. And, you know, when I think about when this building was built, you know, or when the, the library was built or the, you know, the round church was built, these were not inexpensive buildings at the time.
No, they weren't.
You know, when, when this building was built, it was shortly after a devastating fire at the commercial block. We burned right to the ground. It, it, it burned completely to the ground, it was all wood framed, burned completely to the ground, along with several other buildings around it. And shortly after that, they built this building, you know, the second half of this building. The, the people who lived in the town in 1813 and 1879 and 1911, um, felt that the town was worth investing in, to do legacy projects that we're still living with, you know? This is really our time. If we don't do this, you know, I, I think we're going to have a hard time with retention of employees. We'll have a hard time.
Not only that, but if we don't do this now and we say, let's wait 10, 15 years, the building is going to degrade to the point that we would be exposing ourselves to lawsuits from people we're making work here. And then it could cost a ton more. This is just one of those things like, should you have brakes on your car? Hmm, I don't know.
Yeah.
But not having brakes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And that's, that's how I see this, is we're, they're, they're, there's no gold toilet seats.
No, no.
You do, you know the.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that's what we have to, a typical voter wants to make sure that they're not paying for gold toilets, because they've seen too many times where, especially at the federal level where that kind of thing happened.
Yeah.
So transparency is really key and I'm, I'm very glad that we did this video today to be able to communicate to people, no, this building is in a lot worse shape than you may have realized and this is not a sustainable situation.
And I think the more, if we don't do this now and we allow the building to degrade another 10 years, it's only going to become more expensive. It's, it's not going to, the repairs are not going to get cheaper the longer we put them off.
And doing things piecemeal is just going to cost way more money.
Right.
To address one thing at a time, because, you know, it's all related.
Um, you know, for, for full transparency, it, it, it is a lot. It's, it, you know, uh, we calculated $96 per year for the first year, um, on $100,000 worth of valuation. So whatever, and we just kind of went through the reappraisal, so that people get a, a sense of what, what the impact will be on their tax bill. Um, you know, we don't know if the town can swallow it, but we think it's responsible to put, to ask them.
Right.
And so we want to be. And so we wanna be available, we'll be available to answer questions between now and March. Um, and we'll be coming to the select board in December uh with the final ask. Right now, it's nine point eight million.
So you talked about how the ninety-six dollars uh per annum for. One hundred thousand will go down. How, how would that work?
So bond, the municipal, when you take out a municipal bond, which is the least expensive interest that you can, you can find. The way that the, the bond payments are structured is a fixed principal payment and a declining interest payment. I hate that myself. I wish they didn't do it. And so that's different than your mortgage. Your mortgage is a fixed amount over the entire life of the mortgage. So which, you know, how it affected me is that it was really hard for me to come up with my first year payment. And by the end of the, by my mortgage, it didn't seem like so much, you know, because of the declining value of money. The bond payments are not like that, so um, uh, you pay the most upfront. And then it, it goes down over the thirty-year life of the bond. Makes it harder to backfill, you know, when it's a fire track, it needs to be replaced.
The other thing that is part of the bond, that we'll probably have language on the bond that says uh that we're.
Reduced by.
We're gonna continue to look for grants and other funding for this project and, yeah. So we have some, we know of some opportunities to apply for some funding, like the FEMA blood mitigation grant. Some energy grants. There are more energy grants probably than this one. The ADA, the state has an ADA grant program which might be able to pay for some of the ADA. Changes, those are up to hundred and fifty thousand. We have applied for congressionally directed spending and not gotten it, but. Yeah, so there's other, there are other grant opportunities and we'll continue to look for those which would reduce. It won't reduce the amount that the bond is for because we won't know about. Whether we received any of these grants timing wise, but we won't be.
So it could be.
It could reduce the amount that the taxpayers are paying if we got some of these larger grants.
Yeah, so you know, it, it, we could, at the end of the construction project, finalize the bond at nine point eight million, but if we got. A million dollars with FEMA mitigation funds, it would be eight point.
And we held a lot of very successful bake sales.
Very successful bake. You know, and it's something the town can do and something the town can think about is, is our reserve funds. We have several reserve funds that would, that could be applied.
There are some library grants, perhaps they could pay for some of that site work, you know, there. For the handicapped accessibility parts of the library, over on the library. There's, you know, so, uh, one member of the town said, are there opportunities for private fundraising? Maybe we do that to cover the pavilion and the green space. We do a, a private fundraiser and people can have their names on benches or something. I don't. You know, there are other options.
There aren't historic those grants.
Well, because when we looked at the store, we had a, a, a funding conference uh with a, a what?
Fifteen or twenty different funders from the state.
You know, the preservation trust organized it, we had them here, we did a similar tour. Uh, and they go, this is great project, we really love this project. Um, you know, we've got like twenty thousand dollar grants that you could apply for. Um, and if you were to do that, then you'd have to do, you'd have to redo the windows, you'd have to.
You'd have to historically restore them and not do new windows. A full, their whole. The Broom, the Broom grant is a, if you get a historic preservation grant from the state or from the federal government. Which they come through the park service, you have to follow the secretary of the interiors, architectural. Mandate, rules and regulations, and you cannot do new windows. You would have to restore, as long as the windows are restorable, that they're not in such bad condition that's can't be restored. And, and the amount, I think the Broom grant, which is the state grant, is only a hundred thousand dollars.
Very competitive.
And it's very competitive. They liked it, they thought we might get it, but then. It is always the, then, and there are other rules, for example, you have to. Get permission from the preservation trust for the next five years for any change you wanted to make to the. You have to put it on the national register of historic places. It's eligible, this building is eligible for that, but it's not on the register. And as soon as it's on the register, there are rules you have. So, you know, it, it's kind of a.
Didn't seem like the money we would get were worth the strings attached to some of those grants.
Significant amount.
Not a significant enough. No, not at all, not at all.
One, one um uh source that looked like it might be worth doing. Was the congressional discretionary spending grant and we applied for that. And uh, and Senator Sanders included it in his package to go to appropriations. We made it all the way to the appropriations. Stage and that was one point eight million dollars. And if for one point eight million dollars, yeah, we'll deal with the windows. You know, um, but.
Hundred thousand dollars, it's not.
It fell off the table at the, you know, and.
And as Connie knows, some of these grant programs have so many rules. That it's more costly to the town to follow the rules than it is for the amount of money that you got.
Right, I've seen the state and the federal government make some very unrealistic, buildings have suffered near fire damage. So you know, you're, you're looking at that just to start with and then the feds come along and say, well, we're very sorry your building half burned down. But under the conditions of the money that we gave you six years ago, you have to put it back exactly the way it was.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, which is not necessarily the best way.
There have been buildings left half burned down because of that, because they couldn't afford to do that.
But we are continuing, we will continue to be working on that.
We've been ambitious about applying for grants, so, you know, the solar, you know, I, uh, the solar piece. Is something worth thinking about, you know, so that, you know, I came to the select board asking for ARPA money and it was. This is challenging. But, um, you know, that, that's a piece that we took out of the project because it's not a necessary piece of the project. It's, it's more of.
Nice to have.
You know, be nice to have.
And there may be some grant programs that we can find that would pay for that or other ways.
Yeah, I think that's, it's within the realm of possibility.
And we have the chargers on here, the.
Uh, we don't have them on there, but it's, we, we own them, so, I mean, we can move them and, you know, if we do all the site work, it's not gonna be much to move them. Right now, they're connected to the library. They don't need to be, they could be connected to this building.
Yeah, is that likely or are they gonna still be connected to the library, do you think?
I think they probably be connected to this building would make more.
Make more sense to be over here.
Put them out by the post office, we just didn't have a good way to do that.
And this does not include the skywalk from here to the library.
Right, we don't have.
Darn. It doesn't include the veranda on the, on the library building with the. That they would, you know, that, that the staff would like for their lunch breaks.
So, and we didn't tackle the library. The, what, what this committee has, has done is address deferred maintenance on the library. Primarily, we've done a few little things in this building, but we didn't actually want to spend too much. Uh, 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 repairs on this building until we knew whether this would go or not. So, you know, we put automatic doors through the.
Oh, yeah, we did the ADA doors.
With the fire alarms, you know, a couple of windows.
Basically kept and, you know, that's.
So one last question I've got about the fire egress. If you do have a fire and you've got people in wheelchairs up here on this floor. And the elevators are not working because your power's out. Um, what's the, what are the plans for how getting them to, is there going to be, are we gonna be carrying people down the stairs in that case?
I would guess that's what the fire department.
Yeah, I just was wondering, is there some bright idea that?
That's what's gonna happen in the library if somebody's upstairs and there's a fire.
I would imagine the fire department has protocols for that.
Yeah, I imagine they do. Um, the reason I ask is because. In another life, I was working on a project where we were, a building was being built. And they were going to great lengths to have a fire protected stairway, which. The bottom of it let out into the middle of a large open space inside the building. That's so illegal because when you get into one of those staircases, you have to be guaranteed egress. And just had, it would, it made, it was completely pointless to have a fire stairwell that just dumped into the middle, like having a fire stairwell that jumps into Linda's office.
Yeah, right.
Are very helpful.
Yeah, but that, I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna, the architects are responsible for figuring.
Oh, absolutely.
That's why there's that door at the bottom of the library stairwell that goes out the back into the green space. That's the egress from the protected library elevator shaft.
But it's little things like that that you have to communicate to people because it was good enough for my grandfather, it was good enough for my father. Well, yes, that was nineteen thirteen and, you know, there have been cases across the US where people have lost their lives because nineteen thirteen construction wasn't good enough.
We're, we're, we, we're hoping to move into the twenty-first century.
Before it's twenty-ten.
So, thank you, uh, we, we, really, uh, thank you. Thank you, Jay, for attending this. This is, it's really helpful to have this. Did you have any final, final thoughts?
Lisa? Oh, yeah, sorry, um, Ja- Jeff, I, um, just happened to think this, I don't know if I asked this before, but has the architect rated the building for the weight of the sprinkler system? I know, I've seen cases where buildings could not be sprinkled because your structure couldn't take the weight of it. It's a heavy addition, so.
Yeah, yes, we have had uh, um, structural engineers look at the, um, uh, look at the entire building and, and. They expected, they, they expect that this, it was possible, so I'm assuming they're correct.
Perfect, okay, well, as long as they've, it's on them then, so, okay, good, thank you.
There, there was a, there was actually quite a bit of, of engineering that was done in this process. Uh, so, um, I think we spent like sixty or seventy thousand dollars on design so far.
The mechanical engineers thought the way the building's roof was built was very interesting.
It was interesting.
That was how they put it, interesting. Been reinforced at some point and they couldn't quite figure out when, but it's all structurally sound.
I'll take you up there sometime if you want to.
Quickly replaced and so if the building was structurally unsound at that level, they would have addressed it.
They would have been dressed.
That's like the library.
Well, I think that concludes our presentation. Thank you all for, uh, for coming.
And come back on Monday night for round two, when we talk about how to show everyone all the people in.
Yeah, unfortunately, we have a library.
Well, that's right, we do. But we might sell it in time to jump on stuff.
So you, you check out the, uh, the panels at the top of the windows. Being exposed again, it really will change the face of this building. Okay, so I need to stop sharing.